Test one, two.
Medford City Council Committee of the Whole, May 6, 2025 is called to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan.
Counselor Callahan is absent.
And I believe Vice President Collins absent also.
Yes.
Counselor Lozaro, Counselor Lemon, Counselor Scruff Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Sam.
President of Bears.
Present. Five present to absent in this meeting is called to order. There will be a meeting in the Medford City Council Committee of the Whole at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chamber, second floor, Medford City Hall. Sorry, I'm going to turn this down a little bit. Eighty-five George P. Hassett Drive, Medford, Massachusetts, and via Zoom. Action and discussion items, twenty-five zero three nine, annual budget process for fiscal year 2026. Preliminary budget meeting number three. This will be the third preliminary budget meeting of the fiscal twenty-six budget process. The mayor has communicated that the following departments will be present. Board of Health, Facilities, IT, Elections, Executive, and Law, and we'll take it in that order. And just a reminder that we have also two budget meetings ahead of us on May twentieth and May twenty-first. And then we also have already had two budget meetings on April twenty-ninth and April thirtieth. So with that, we will start with the Board of Health and Civil Defense. Welcome.
Counselor, I need to turn this on?
It's on. You're good.
Okay.
I'm happy to just read it out really quickly and then you can add all the lovely details and I'll give you a little prompt when I'm done and then we can go to questions from members of the council. So we have the Board of Health and Animal Control. We had the fiscal twenty-five budget at eight hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight. Fiscal twenty-six proposed nine hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine for an increase of one hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred and one dollars. And these are fixed costs. There's a significant increase in the employees and that is because two positions that were fifty percent ARPA are being added to the general fund. And we also had COLA increases and STEP increases for our non-union and union employees. The mosquito control and kennel services are up sixteen thousand. That's an increase by four percent for the mosquito control and kennel services have increased with more dogs being held each year. So basically, just the three questions are if you want to explain more about the change in the budget and, you know, talk more about what I just kind of did a quick overview of. We'd love to hear your highlights of the past year, any plans for the upcoming year. And then finally, you know, what is a priority or a project that isn't funded this year that you'd like to see funded in the future?
Okay.
With that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So I guess the biggest changes in the budget, like you mentioned. Typically mosquito control and canine expenses were combined into one line item. We've separated them out this year to make it a little cleaner. So our mosquito control services did increase by four percent. So that's the twenty-seven six that we've already received the invoice for for the upcoming year. And then we split out canine expenses and added additional funding to that line item because we are already over budget this year with the number of dogs we've had to deal with and the services we've had to provide. So that's for that increase. And then, like you said, the employees, it's just mostly step and COLA and the removal of two positions off of ARPA. I don't know if you see the health equity coordinator position there. I know that looks small, but that's actually a just a match for BA Foundation funding that we have. So that's the city's match for the salary. The rest of the salary comes from the BA Foundation.
Great. What were the two positions that came onto the general fund from ARPA?
So it was the administrative support and the community social worker.
Great. Thank you.
And then just, I guess, a couple of highlights. So we are participating in what's called the Public Health Excellence Grant. It's a regional grant with five other communities that does give us access to additional personnel and services. So with that funding, we've been able to supplement some of our food inspection work with a consultant paid to the PH grant. So that's helped us accomplish over five hundred and fifty-one restaurants inspections this year, which is a lot better than we've done in previous years, and hopefully that'll continue. Now, the highlight with our environmental services is because of our participation in this Public Health Excellence Grant, there's a lot more training required of our inspectional services piece and our inspector employees. All three of our inspectors have completed what's called Tier Two Food Safety Inspection Training. And I'm told that that's where the first health department in the Northeast region to have that accomplishment. And one of our inspectors, Z, is actually Tier Three trained. So the other two will be moving forward with that as well. Our public health nursing has been hard at work this year. She is actually out on maternity leave right now, which is another highlight of the year. She had twins, so that's nice. But she conducted over eight hundred shots, our flu and COVID shots at clinics. She provided a hundred and forty-nine homebound shots. And she's been working with the schools to help administer vaccines and TB tests to students needing them to enter Medford Public Schools that are totaling three hundred and two vaccines and eighty-six TB tests. We're hoping that program, it's called the Vaccine for Children Program, and it's free vaccines from the state that we received, which they receive through the CDC. We're hoping that program continues, but we're not sure with the federal funding on the line, if we'll be able to continue that, which would be a shame. Our Office of Prevention and Outreach has been doing amazing work through our Municipal Vunno preparedness grant. We've expanded our outreach and events. Community Connecters team has organized over a dozen citywide events, the Winter Preparedness, the Hispanic and Brazilian Heritage celebrations, engaging more than five hundred residents and families and sharing resources. We've enhanced our language and access support. We still have our multilingual access line. We've received about a hundred and fifty calls this year to that line. Again, navigating services for folks in Spanish, Haitian, Creole, Portuguese, and Arabic. We've completed five hundred and forty community liaisons and a hundred and twenty-one social service navigation cases across those five languages as well. Been insisting folks with mass health insurance, getting them on SNAP benefits, assisting them with housing, legal work, job readiness workshops. ESOL classes has been huge and we're really working. One of the things we're excited about hopefully going forward into next year is a expanded relationship with Bunker Hill University and having ESOL classes enhanced through Bunker Hill's assistance and other work readiness programming as well through Bunker Hill. So that's exciting. We have a new social service coordinator came on last November. He's been doing great work. He's really a has robust inter-agency collaboration with Elliott, A, B, C, D, and Housing Families, Medford Housing Authority. He's helping with the hub, the Medford Malden Hub, and the Housing Task Force meetings, really facilitating coordinated care. He's also been doing a lot of work with DCR and reaching out to some of our unhoused individuals throughout Medford and trying to assist with services. We had a wonderful community connections to CARE Symposium, which came out of funding we received from Melwack Tufts Healthcare. It was a a program designed to look at, to be, and evaluate the behavioral health needs of diverse communities and how we could do outreach. And that campaign that we created reached over twelve thousand residents through targeted digital outreach and billboards. We also have a relationship now with North Suffolk for our Recovery Coach Services. We've contracted with North Suffolk. We have Chris, who's wonderful. He's with us working. A lot of that is funded through our opioid settlement money. And we also have two RISE Foundation grants that helps fund that work. So we not only do sober home scholarships, we'll assist with transportation, we'll they give them gym memberships, which allows them to not only be healthy but also hygienic. And we mark National Overdose Awareness Day with our community to display to raise awareness in one of those lives lost to overdoses. So Chris is doing great work. And they're actually going to be holding a program here tomorrow for employees, both Chris and Jayce. So Chris is doing great work. And they're actually going to be holding a program here tomorrow for employees, both Chris and Jason, our community social worker, helping them to assist and de-escalate situations and let employees know how to deal with customers who may have issues that that need to be just de-escalated and saved. So that and going forward, our plans for this year that we're looking forward to accomplishing is trying to streamline our permitting system, working with CitizenServe to go online and make it easier for folks to to get their permits. So we're going to start with simpler, like dumpster and hauler permits. And then hopefully by the end of next fiscal year, we'll actually have our food permitting process online, which would be really great. I think that's against everything.
My only other question was, is there anything that you'd like to do that you wasn't able to be funded this year?
We've just been lucky through all the grants and the PHE grant is really huge. And if that grant, again, is allowed to continue, that's over five-hundred-thousand dollars for us in the region. But again, what's concerning is we're public health funding may be going in the future. So that would be a problem.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm gonna go to Counselor Lozaro, then Counselor Lemon, then Counselor Sam. Counselor Lozaro.
Thank you very much for being here. I just wanted to highlight the fact that your department is, I mean, nominally the health department, but it encompasses so many different areas of the city. Cover permitting for restaurants, like things like dumpsters. We've worked with you on rodents, overgrowth ordinances, gender-affirming care and reproductive healthcare, things like food insecurity, things like services for people who are unhoused or have substance use disorder. There are so many things that your department does that I think it could be like four or five departments. So I just really appreciate all of the work that your department does. And I was I was wondering if you could tell us how many employees, how many full-time and how many part-time employees you have?
So we have three full-time inspectors. We have an administrative clerk and a head clerk in the environmental side of life. And then on the Office of Prevention and Outreach, we, city-funded, is our Office of Prevention and Outreach Manager, as well as our social worker. And then our health equity coordinator is eighty percent Bar-funded. And the Recovery Coach is funded through the Opioid Foundation. He's part-time. He's eighteen hours a week. But then liaisons and the connectors, there's five of each. They're all grant-funded, partially through Bar and partly through the MVP grid.
And they're.
They're part-time. They're up to fifteen hours a week.
It really often, I mean, the impression I get is that it's pulled together from a lot of different sources and that in other cities of similar size, it will often, I feel like I've worked in other cities where, or I've interacted with other cities where their issues are similar to ours, but they have departments that are many times larger, many more opportunities for people to access things like maybe an office of housing security. So if somebody is going through a struggle to stay in their housing, they would have access to somebody who would be able to, you know, like maybe seven or eight people who would be able to help with like the intricacies of that. And it seems like a lot to put on the back of somebody in one health department. So I just really appreciate all that you and your department do and how much work it must be to manage all of this and really appreciate your presentation. And it's a difficult time generally. So I just appreciate you laying it all out for us and all the work you've been doing and growing the community liaison program as well, which is very exciting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Lemon.
Yes, would also like to echo all the praise that my colleague just gave. This is a department that has far too many tasks and demand, and I feel like is just doesn't have the capacity to fulfill, to fulfill all of that, which is, which relates to my question. So, you know, as a city councilors, we often get concerns about things like rats in the city, which is not uncommon with municipalities in greater Boston. We get concerns about, like, there's one resident who is messaging me about raccoons that are in a neighboring house that she can't seem to do anything about. I'm sure that you're aware of the case that I'm talking about. And of course, we also hear a number of concerns about dog poop not being picked up, things like that. And I see that there is one animal control officer who I have heard is a one-man department in himself, so very much appreciated. My question first is, how, given all of the, given all the need around the city for the services that are offered by the department, by the Board of Health, how many employees do you think you would need in a perfect world to fulfill all of that? So I don't think that the eleven personnel that we're seeing is necessarily enough, but just hypothetically, if the city did have more resources to handle, what would what would be your need?
Oh, certainly, at least, at least one more inspector, if not one and a half, to help keep up with the requirements. Animal control is tough because he's nine-to-five during the day, you know, a third or fourth day, the rest of us. So off-hours and weekends, you know, there's often situations that sometimes the police have to respond to or others, and then people get upset that their needs aren't getting met. So, you know, another animal control officer to help with those off-hours or on-call, something of that nature. And obviously, yeah, I mean, we could do more if we had another social service person and another recovery person. You know, we could definitely do more outreach, but with that, you need to have the support and revenue and the programming to also offer stuff. So you need also additional funding for, you know, to do actually, to do the work, not just the bodies. So, yeah, I guess.
Yeah. So I was hearing about five different, you probably need about five more people to plus additional funding for the programming in order to meet at least some of that need was was what I was.
We're actually hoping to bring on a, because we've been doing a lot of more work, which is great, really exciting work with the schools. So again, through grant funding, we're going to be bringing on a part-time prevention coordinator as well to work more closely with the schools. So like, again, a lot of what we do is grant-funded. We rely heavily on grants. The grants go away. We're in trouble.
And for for all of the positions that that I'm seeing here, would you say that the amount of the salaries listed is commensurate with what we see in other municipalities, is a little bit more, a little bit less? What would, how would you put that?
It, we're, we're, we're in the ballpark with with most as far as our inspectors and our public health nursing. You know, our outreach manager, prevention outreach manager is probably, I would say, for her caliber, a little underpaid for the work that she does. But for the most part, we're, we're pretty in line with most communities.
Okay. And a very specific question, this just relates to a little bit of research I was doing in response to what one constituent was asking. The three, the sanitarians. So I was, so a constituent who was saying that the sanitarians in Medford didn't have a state license, which I looked up sanitarians in other municipalities, and I found out that that was pretty common. So like, most of them didn't have a license under, under the state for the, I think it was like the Board of Health Sanitarian License. Can you just, for my own benefit, tell me about what that processes or what the benefit of that of having that is?
So they're actually all in the process of going through to become registered sanitarians. But there are requirements, like you actually have to be on the job for a year or two, and there, some of them are brand-new for us. So they can't even apply yet. But Z is, he's in, he's in the process of becoming a registered sanitarian. But again, the state is really looking to coordinate regionalized services so that if you're getting a food inspection in Malden, you're getting the same food inspection in Medford, right? So they want all the inspectors to be trained at the same level, which is like that Tier Two that I was talking about, and they will be going through Tier Three. They want consistency throughout the state, and that's why they're providing all this funding through our Public Health Excellence Grant. So they're all going through immense trainings, but, you know, in order to do pool inspections, they all have to be have their CPO. In order to do the food inspections, they all have to have the serve safe. And again, this this additional training with the tiers program. Housing, the same thing. There's a tier program for housing that they're all going through. So the inspections, again, will be consistent. But to be an IRS, that's a lot of studying. It's a hard exam. And you have to have meet certain requirements before you can even apply. But honestly, I believe Z is taking his with him next month or two. So
Great.
That's kind of exciting. Yeah. But that's, and that's like a national accreditation.
Yeah, yeah. No, I was just, I was just curious about that from my own knowledge. And finally, so I sent, so we've been receiving some demand from constituents who really want backyard chickens. They, they want, they want to have chickens in their backyard. It is something that I have been hearing from niche groups for a little bit now. But the Board of Health does not want to deal with backyard chickens. And I understand that there are good reasons for not wanting to deal with that. So could you just, while I'm asking you questions, could you just talk a little bit about why, like, what extra staffing hypothetically would be needed to to deal with that in the future? Should we, should we move in that direction, just with some of your concerns?
Sure. I know people, especially with the price of eggs these days. Chickens are really, we have rodents. We have a real rodent problem. And chickens would severely contribute to that rodent problem, not only with their feed, but also with their, you know, their feces. And, and they actually do carry, their feces does carry disease. So unless they really are taken care of well, and and that's the thing, people want them. And then do they really know how to take care of them and do it the right way? Also, there's a noise factor. People complain about the noise if their neighbors. So there's certain, you know, if they, if they have the space, we would actually have to look at, you know, how much space, how close are they to their neighbors? How close will the chicken coop be to their neighbors yet? So there's a lot of considerations. But right now with that rodent problem, I would not want to contribute to that even more at this point because we're really trying to get that under control first.
Okay, well, I used to own chickens. Well, my mom did, so I'm a little bit biased in that direction, but this is a conversation for another day. Thank you.
Matt Lemming is pro-chicken. Saying is chicken neutral.
Um, for people who missed my comment, I said I do like to eat chicken. I'm sorry. Sorry, sponsors. I do want to, you know, echo the sentiments of Counselor Lozaro and Counselor Lemon in thanking you for all the work that you've done with the City Council this, this year, this past year. We, Counselor Lozaro really rattled off a long list, and that's, you know, testament to our cooperation. I just had a few kind of shorter questions. I think a lot of similar questions have been asked. When we talk about, you know, worries that grant money might disappear, are there any positions you have in mind that, you know, might be at risk in the next budget year?
Yeah, actually, I forgot to mention, shame on me. So we have what's called the BSF Bureau Substance Abuse Services through DPH. It's a, we are the fiscal agent for a regional grant, and it really does provide a lot of support for all of our prevention work with the schools and others. And Sophie is our full-time coordinator of that grant. So that is a grant that's funded through, comes through the feds on down. So that's concerning. And we already know it was a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. And again, it's a regional grant. It covers four or five communities, probably five. And we already know it's going to be cut to one-hundred-and-fifty at max. It could be one-hundred-and-twenty-five. We're not sure yet. So the money's already being cut in half. So that's going to cut into the work we can do prevention-wise. And right now, like, that grant is funding our Youth Action Council at the high school. It's helping with our Rideside and a few other programs that we have at the high school. So, yeah.
Is that funding her position as well?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you aware of any plans to, you know, in case that funding disappears, what we're gonna do next as a city?
Would have to just chase additional grants at this point. And again, we're lucky. We do have the opioid settlement money, but there are real restrictions on what that can be spent on. So.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's just, it's awful what's happening from, you know, from at that level. And especially in terms of what it means for our resources as a city. So anything that we can do to kind of plan ahead, plan for the worst, I think, would be a good idea. So some, I guess, something just for all of us to keep in the back of our heads, especially for counselors and administration. My final question, I know we've talked a lot about this, and I expect this is just gonna be a rehashing of what we talked about. A lot of residents recently have reached out to us about rats, about rodents. And I know it's top of mind for you, and I was wondering if you wanted to take this opportunity to quickly summarize again what we're doing as a city on rodents and maybe what we can do going forward.
Sure. So we do respond to every complaint that we get as timely as we can. And we do still contract with Yankee Pest Control through ARPA funding. And they are able to go to residents and treat burrows if there are burrows on their properties. We, we're not using rodenticide. They're using the carbon monoxide treatment. So we're not doing rodenticide in with our city program at all. But we are looking into other options. And the rodent control ordinance that you all passed does have those fees attached to it and also fines. So right now, we are getting the fees collected, and that's going into a restricted account. We're not quite there getting the fines yet. That would have to, the ordinance would have to be revised a little bit. But we are getting pretty good fees from, you know, construction dumpsters, all kinds of places where we're mandating that they provide what's called an integrated pest management plan. It's an IPM. So they have to contract with a licensed pest control agency, have to provide us with the plan, what they're gonna do, how often they're gonna do it. And so we're monitoring all of that all the time.
Cool. That's helpful, I think, for residents to hear, to be reassured that, you know, we are paying attention to this issue. You mentioned if we want to collect fines, we need to adjust the ordinance a little bit. Are you aware of counselors who are already working on that, or is that something that we should take on?
You can send us the language. I don't think anyone's working. I'm not aware of anyone working on it yet.
I think we had had a little bit of a discussion earlier, but right now, like I said, the fines are going into revolving accounts. So that's great because that hopefully will, once the ARPA only runs out, that'll help fund, continue to fund our program with the burrows.
Yeah, and I know that there's problem properties that really, you know, need, need to be.
Yeah, and it's, sometimes it's more difficult to get folks to, to, to do what needs to be done to comply. Sometimes it's just too expensive for them, you know? Sometimes it's just too much work because they're alone and they're elders. And so, yeah, coming up with additional assistance would be great.
Yeah, and I know you'll be judicious, and I know that the fine is certainly the last resort. But, you know, if there's someone who can fix it and just chooses not to, that's not being a good neighbor. Anything else, Counselor Sam?
I'm good. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so feel free, you know, whoever needs to be a part of it to communicate with me or with other counselors about getting that done.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I just have a couple questions of my own on the, so we talked about federal funds. I know that nonprofit and, you know, philanthropy in general is also in kind of a not great place to be inartful with my words. Are you concerned about any of the private grants that we get not being continued?
Not at this time. It depends on like the, the agenda. I guess some of the time, we're being told, and some of the grants that we're currently even writing are some of the, we have like, well, we have. we have like, well, we haven't gotten to civil service, but we're doing a couple of grants right plans right now that are funded by the feds through FEMA. And we've already been told like we need to change some language that we're using. So, you know, I I'm I'm assuming and I'm hoping that federal private funding and foundations won't be affected by that, but.
Yeah. I'm guessing that might be language related to the equal rights of all human beings or something like that.
Climate change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Science and humanity. Okay. Is there, have you heard of anything regionally or kind of in the public health world space around like trying to join together and try to replace federal funds or work with other cities to apply for grants from larger foundations? Is that work that you're connected with?
Yeah, yeah. And the Mass Public Health Association. I mean, a lot of folks are really working on this right now. And Commissioner DPH just sent out a notification today outlining the administration's initial budget that was put forth and what that would mean and and ways that they're already keeping an eye on it.
The federal administration.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they? I'm trying to remember everything I follow, but is there a new law around public health in the state around funding? Or is that did that the legislature pass something around boards of health? What? Sorry?
Yes, yes, SAPI two point O, which is where this public health Excellence Grant is coming from. And where the regulations are are not regulations, but where the the desire to train everybody up to standards and to really get
Okay.
Consistency. So as far as I know, that money is fine.
Okay, and that's additional funds. Okay, great. Last two things relatively small, just things that you mentioned. The ESOL classes, is that something that you are in partnership with the library on?
Yes.
Right? And animal control off hours calls, do you have any data? And I can ask the chief when we see him, do you have any data on how what the response like? How often are officers responding?
I could probably get that for you, and the police obviously would probably have data, but Pat does track a lot of the calls that he gets left of weekends and evenings and stuff.
So I'm just wondering, you know, from a
Oh, there's a lost dog or there's a, you know, yes.
Right. And and I guess like some of it, I'm just wondering, how much time do we have officers out doing that? How much is that costing us in the long run? Versus what it would look like to provide additional support in the Health Department for animal control? Because that might be one of those things where we're not funding it in one place and we're actually, you know, in some ways spending more. I know it's not that simple. You can't just transfer the money like that, but um that might be an interesting thing for us to take a look at. So more of a conversation starter than anything else.
Okay.
Counselor Lemming.
Oh, I mean, I personally think it's a very interesting piece of information, but it would be the Police Department that could that could answer that. So I was just thinking about wondering if this body would be amenable to a motion to just request that information from Chief Buckley.
And then we might have it for when we have the meeting with them.
Yeah.
Great. So it's a motion to request from Chief Buckley and Medford Police data on how much time officers are spending responding to animal control issues outside of City Hall hours. Great. Awesome. Any other questions on the Health Department budget? And we'll jump to civil defense, and then we can take any questions from members of the public. Seeing none, we'll go to civil defense. We have maybe the first increase I've ever seen. We're going from three $9,390 to $9,840, and it looks like we're adding a little bit for supplies, dues, conferences and travel, and some equipment maintenance. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
So, yeah, there's a little bit of a bump in the dues conference and travel line. That's dues that we pay to participate in the Regional Emergency Planning Council, the REPC. So those are actual dues that we need to pay annually. Public safety supplies and repairs and commitment. So we're in the midst of putting together our shelter plan. We actually have a walkthrough our emergency shelter. We have the Andrews Middle School. We actually are doing a walkthrough with some key staff tomorrow just to show what a shelter would look like, how it operates, what we do. So some of that's a little bump in in supplies that will help, you know, maybe buy some blankets or pillows and stuff. We have we have cots already. That have been supplied in the past through our emergency planning funding that comes through DPH, which comes through the feds, which comes with FEMA, which is again in jeopardy. But we do have a lot of great supplies that we've already acquired over the years. So this is just to kind of augment some of that.
Where do we store those?
So right now, all the cots are in the high school in the locker rooms that aren't being used.
The, yeah.
But we did, yeah, but this year we through our FEP, what's called FEP funding, it's the Public Health Emergency Planning funds, we we were able to acquire a trailer.
Okay.
So we're going to be taking all the supplies and equipment that we have. We actually have supplies here as well, which has some in the basement that are hygiene kits and stuff. So we have them kind of spread out all over. So we have the trailer now. We'll be able to, you know, get our MRC volunteers to help us do some inventory and load up the trailer and put it all so it's ready to rock and roll when we need it.
Great. Anything else you want to share on the civil defense front?
And we're working on our hazard mitigation plan. Again, we do have FEMA funds to complete that. We're in the community engagement process right now, which is kind of nice. It's one of the first times, I think, in the hazard mitigation planning history that full community engagement has been involved. So that process is ongoing now. We're doing some surveying. And it's it's probably a year long process, but hopefully be done by the end of next fiscal year.
Great. Do any questions on civil defense for members of the council? Seeing none. Do you have any questions from members of the public or comments from members of the public for the Board of Health or civil defense? Seeing none in person and no hands on Zoom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right, we'll go to facilities. Welcome. Thanks for being here. Just gonna quickly read off the budget change. And then you can I'll read the kind of conversation prompts, and then we can go from there. We have facilities fiscal twenty five budget, one million eight hundred thirty eight thousand seven hundred and forty five fiscal twenty six proposed, one million nine hundred thirty three, three hundred and ninety three. That's a change of ninety four thousand six hundred and forty eight. There's a COLA increase for the permanent employee. And we have some changes and increases in supplier costs for fuel, utilities, janitorial supplies, and increases in our contracts for HVAC and cleaning. So with that, I'll turn it over to you to talk about what the changes in the budget, some of your highlights from the previous year, plans for the year ahead. And what is a project or a priority that's not funded this year that you think needs to be funded in the future?
So the budget reflects my best guess to guesstimate of what costs are going to be rising. I actually had my first vendor that had to increase price due to tariffs. So that's a big fear that prices will start rising for certain commodities that we need to run the buildings. The HVAC and the cleaning contract are built in that they will rise every year. They're very limited, but they those costs do go up. So, you know, it's something we're monitoring. Right now I am a department of one, but next fiscal year, it's not reflected in my budget. But the maintenance worker at the library and the senior center will start reporting to me. So there's a better line of communication on building repairs. So we can start building a more holistic approach to building repairs and provide more support for those two individuals along with the person that's part time at the Chevalier. So that will be a settling change of way we're doing things, but I think it will be a benefit for everybody when we do that.
Just really quickly, is the intent maybe in the future to?
Yeah, I think the intent would be then to move the budget over. So it'd be truly a part of the facilities department. But it was a request I made, and that's, you know, I think will help the city in the long run. Some projects that I think we completed successfully, one of the LED lights here at City Hall. I've already seen the energy bills go down since we've installed them. It's much brighter in City Hall. The council chambers is one example how how it's changed the look.
Now we can see everything.
Yes. Some ways that might not be a good thing, but we can see better.
But
Yes, and and the windows which are in progress. It unfortunately will look messy as we're doing this, but the vendor for the curtains and the shades is happily making them. And so those will start, once those start getting installed, the chambers will look back to the way it should. Replacing windows in three fire stations was very helpful for those fire stations. We are in the process of renovating a bathroom at engine four, so that's a great thing to to do, to be able to do that. I don't know if anybody uses the Chevalier, but we've been replacing the inside lighting with LED lighting. We've put a new kind of lighting up top that can do multiple colors, can actually be an enhancement with the show. Blumenreich is very happy with that. So that that will be completed soon. We also put video signage outside the Chevalier Theater to help advertise shows and bring people into the theater.
I saw the sign for Kid Ninja.
Yeah.
That was the first one I seen.
Projects I'm looking at for the future is one, I really want to start the renovations of the bathrooms here at City Hall. Complete convert two of them into total ADA compliant bathrooms on the first floor. And then continue that project all the way through City Hall. So our bathrooms can be up to date and
Even the one up here? Do you know about that one?
I know that one. They they were looking at that to be my office, so. I know that very well.
Talk about facilities.
Yes. So that that would be good. And I'd also like to replace the carpet here in the council chambers and complete the the finishing of the council chambers.
You you've taken a question out of my mouth.
Working with DPW, we have headquarters and Riverside have a fire station that needs some desperate needed roadwork, so I may be coming for funding to get those projects underway and done.
Okay. Great. Any questions from members of the council for Director Regi and the Facilities Department? All right, I just have a couple really quick ones. We should think, I mean, I I definitely agree, the carpets in here are in need of replacement. I I don't know what's under them. Do you know what's under them?
I I don't know if I really want to look.
I'm hoping it's something good, not something bad, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would love that it's a flooring that could actually be reused.
The clerk is saying he thinks it might be hardware under there.
Yeah, I mean, if it was a flooring that could be repurposed and reused, I think it would be something that would be worth exploring.
Great. And I just think, obviously, this is tentative on the decision of the voters. If there's a charter change, we're gonna have to change this.
I've already started trying to figure that out.
Okay, great. We'd love to coordinate on that. I'd love to coordinate that. I'm sure everyone has an opinion. So we'll see if it happens or not, but it's significant change. I noticed that the utilities actuals are really high. Is that?
That was due to natural gas. Natural gas exploded with what National Grid did. So I was paying probably three times the amount that I was last year at the same time, so that the usage was the same or a little bit less, but the cost of of that was something that we were not expecting and nobody forecast that.
Is is that in your estimation, is that coming back down?
It's come back down, but whether they're saying that it may go up again, I know the state regulators are working with them. Because the costs, I think, were prohibitive for a lot of residents as as opposed to cities and towns and businesses. So I think holistically, they're looking at everything and seeing how they can keep those costs down.
Are you expecting that we'll be in a deficit for this fiscal year?
I have a feeling, yes, we will.
And I notice it's up thirty thousand, but is that is that something that?
I'd say I'd maybe fifty.
Okay.
It's it's hard to project.
Okay. Just in the kind of, I know we've been working really hard on the existence of your department is like a shared services consolidated services model. You and I know IT has been working on that as well. You mentioned the maintenance staff. That sounds like a good good change. Is there anything else that's still kind of hanging out there from a maintenance perspective?
What what I'm look, what I think we need to explore is if we have one or full time, basically handyman that are employed by the city, because I get a lot of requests from fire stations and City Hall. You know, there's a loose toilet seat or a light bulb needs to be replaced. And if we had our in house staff, I think we may be able to reduce costs because right now I have to go out to a plumber or a contractor to, you know, fix a simple door. Or sometimes I'm doing it myself. So I think we need to look at if that's something we can we can employ in the city and they can go to the various to the eighteen buildings that, you know, I'm responsible for and do that kind of work and reduce costs from our outside vendors.
Great. And last thing, outside of the HVAC and cleaning, what is funded in the building repair line?
Building repair is basically everything and anything I do, pest control, you know, plumbing services, electricians, fire alarm, fire alarm repair, elevators. So it's roof repairs, everything that would come into the facilities goes into that budget line.
How many of our buildings have elevators?
This building, library, Chevalier, and then the Brooks Estate.
Well, yeah. Police has one to the fire.
Police have one. The fire stations has been it's out. It's not used anymore. It's not being inspected. It's out of service.
And is that just South Menford or?
Oh, the fire station?
Yeah.
No, the only one is at headquarters.
Headquarters, okay.
Yeah, there's no other fire station.
Okay. Awesome. Well, that's all I had. Seeing Matt Lemming, Counselor Lemming.
Yeah. Could you just, if the charter does pass and we have to make seven seats into eleven, I'm just looking for a guesstimate here. What like, how much do you think that that would cost total? Well, I think first I have to really look at this, the way it's set up now would not be able to be expanded or anything. So basically, it would try to reimagine the whole area of how how we would do eleven counselors with the president sitting, you know, at the head. So it may be a two tier system, kind of what it is now, but in a different configuration. So I really have to start working with a designer on that to figure out what is the best optimization of any space. And because I don't envision this being expanded back. So we're really, yeah, back towards towards the audience because you need that space. So to how to revision and having the handicap lift there, which we need, you know, limits some of the space that we have to 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 go to do it.
Yeah, and I think too, there's some functionality elements and obviously design elements of
Yeah.
Screens. And this layout is actually really difficult for interactive or panel. And it obviously divides the room in a way that you can't use this space as actually.
You know, it needs to be done the correct way since this is a historic chamber. So we have to keep with that. You know, we can't do something modern. We would need to keep with within the, you know, confines of what exists now. So what's the minimum that you think it could cost? And what's the most you think it could cost?
So what's the minimum that you think it could cost and what's the most you think it could cost?
I would hope it would be under a hundred thousand, but you know, don't quote me on that, because you know, construction materials are one of the materials that are are rising every day. And if we're using wood, that's something that is rising right now, so. That that's what the catcher here is.
So under, so so under a hundred, so you you don't think it would be in like the million dollar range?
I don't think so, and if it was, I would go to a different designer and say, no, sorry, we're not doing that.
So why did the windows cost around?
Because those were a total historic preservation, so. Basically, they are the windows that were built, put into the building when the building was built. They are the windows that came out, but every piece of glass has been re-glazed. You cannot tell it, but I'd say anywhere from fifty to sixty percent of the wood on these windows is now brand new. But the way it is done, it's to preserve the look and the means, so that's why it was so costly, because. As opposed to just taking them in and replacing the glass, it had to be period glass, it had to be the right size. All the wood, the fans on the top had to be exactly the same.
Okay, thank you.
Got it, all right, Council saying.
Just going off of that line, I I know some voters would want to have the most information possible before voting on the question in the fall. I know you're super busy, but is there a way that we could get a more solid estimate by election time?
I'm working with our House doctor on a couple of other cost estimates, so I can see if they can come in and look at this and give us maybe a sketch and. A ballpark figure on a cost.
Thanks.
If you wouldn't mind including me in some way, so I can convey.
I can include you on the email.
Great. Any further questions on facilities? Seeing none of the any members of the public who would like to make a comment on the facilities budget. Seeing none in the chambers and no hands on Zoom, thank you very much. IT, information technology. We have Director Rich Lane with us. Do you have a presentation? Is that why you joined our Zoom?
Didn't I have one last year?
You did, you know, I never know. We can make you a co-host, Mr. Clerk. Oh, you already did? Great.
Adam is on top of it.
And I will just very quickly read off my thing before you start your screen share. But we are looking at a budget increase from three hundred fifty seven thousand to three hundred sixty thousand or so, two thousand eight hundred ninety one dollars. And that is, there's a cola increase and a travel reimbursement increase for some. Travel between the buildings. All right, go ahead.
Thank you.
Do you think your presentation will cover what's the change?
It's gonna cover it all, my friend.
All right, lovely.
Do this together, share, see if I remember how to use Zoom, it's been a while.
Be careful, they'll start having to do a presentation for everybody.
Well, you said I could go first last year.
Did I, did I, did I?
Yeah.
Well.
It's rough, isn't it?
Third. How long did we make you wait this year compared to last year?
It wasn't as bad, it was dark out last year. It was just me and Nita last year, actually, left at the end.
Well, it's just the two of you again, but at least it's bright.
She's a good sport, she always takes takes the last one, so.
She and she offered that again, I appreciate. We've incremental improvement.
There we go.
You know.
All right, so you'll be our fiscal year twenty six, talking about it, I feel like we did this like a year ago, but we'll do it again. Just quick agenda, I'll go over high level, what I've done, what I plan to do, what the budget looks like, and then some possible concerns we could run into, things like that. So capital project update, you know, until you write it down, you don't realize how many of them you have, that you're trying to manage at once, but there's about seven of them. We're making progress, not as fast as I would like, but you know, we're beholden to other vendors, market conditions, getting, you know, materials, things like that, that. Just don't always align the right way, because a lot of these projects actually relate to each other and rely on certain milestones to move the next milestone forward. But we're getting there, we're getting there, I feel I feel good about where we're at right now. We've hit a couple of snags in a few projects, but we're ironing them out and we're gonna continue to move forward. When all this is done, this lays the infrastructure for the city for the next twenty five years, from a technology standpoint. That's why I wanted to take these on, they needed to get done, most communities have already done a lot of these. We were lucky that we're late in a way and that technologies have advanced. You know, we have better things we can do going forward, easier without upgrades and things like that. So I I think it worked out well from the timing, couple of them to call out the. Z-tron system, which is the the fire departments alerting system, switching lights on, radio calls, let's know where to go. It's it's really a next generation system for them, the system they have now is nearly twenty years old, so there's a lot of limitations to it. You know, we're always concerned about staffing and how do we augment staff with technology? This is one of the ways we can do it, it helps the call center, the nine one one center. It automates a lot of things for them, so that the people there can focus on who's on the phone in distress. Instead of typing in a bunch of archaic commands to keyboards and stuff. And it gives us more flexibility on how we work the alerting system for each fire station. You can open doors automatically, things like that. So I I'm really happy to see that that's going forward really well. Then one of the big projects that touched a lot of people's lives that I work with was recabling the entire building here for networking. It was quite a project, we started the week of Thanksgiving, we finished early April. But my crew that I had every day showed up at six AM, went to work, they're consummate professionals, like I couldn't be happier with the work they did and the way it came out. Now we just need to finish the project and that's the network piece that's under design right now. So right now our network is very archaic, the way we run it, the way we protect it, the way it works and services it provides. We'll be able to build a modern network architecture that that'll serve us for years to come. And then just other things like replacing phone system, that's already had a great sort of. Response from the outside, all the outside buildings like DPW, Conservaging, Library. They're all super happy with the flexibility it provides them, the things they can do with it. We can manage it ourselves now for the most part, but we also have the provider two seconds away, every time I call, they pick up the phone. Where our car provider doesn't really do that. So in, there's a lot of cool things that you could do with it, there's a mobile app, so you can. Put your the mobile app on, have it look like your desk phone, so you're out in the field, so fiber prevention. They love that because they're out all day doing inspections, but they're waiting on contractors to call them. They have to drive back to the office, check for messages, drive back onto the field. Now, it's just like the guy calls them, I'm five minutes away, I'll be right over, get it done, makes them more efficient. So it's things like that we're always looking to do within technology. You know, it's it's sometimes hard, obviously you have to weigh cost versus benefit, but I think we do a lot with a a very small amount of money, so. I'm pretty proud of that. Oh, come on now. So the budget itself, yeah, it's reasonably, pretty much looks exactly like it did last year. You know, I made the commitment to not trying to add anything or ask for anything else, I try to want to do. You know, more with less and then less being that costs just go up as everybody comes up here and says, you know, support costs, just software support alone. Went up anywhere from eight to thirteen percent, but I will work around that and make it work inside my budget. We probably will next year, the year after, have to sit down, have some conversations about some expiring contracts that we, I locked in. And I'll get to this in a minute, I locked in a lot of contracts, because I could see the the future coming, because I've been through this before in my career. But they will expire at some point, so we probably will have cost increase some some places. There we go. So savings, we continue to look for savings wherever we can get them, working with other department heads, what they're what they're doing, you know, they have technology in the field. How can we reduce those costs? Can we combine contracts, which gives us more leverage to go back and say, hey, look, we consume a lot of your products. You need to give us a better discount and make the price more palatable for us, so we've been doing that. Staffing costs, we continue to save on that, I'll pat myself on the back a little bit. A community this size does not have an IT department of one, it's usually IT department anywhere from five to eight. So somewhere in the three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year savings, just because I'm generally good at my job. None of my peers, none of the communities know how I do it, so yeah, so I'm pretty pretty happy with that. And then at the end of last year, like I said, I locked in a bunch of contracts, I also bought hardware. I the biggest chunk of hardware we need for the network and city network, I bought that last year, because I knew. There was an election going on and things were gonna change, I said, look, let me pay for it this year, purchase it. And then we won't implement to next year, it probably saved us about a hundred thousand dollars just doing that alone. And then desktops and laptops, buying a bunch at the end of the year, I think really helped us a lot, because they, everything's gone up by about twenty five percent as far as hardware across the board. I think it's gonna go up a lot more before it starts to come down, it always goes up a lot faster than it comes down. So I would be looking at the end of the year before I'd feel like it's cost effective, which put me six months behind on my products, so you see why I kind of would do something like that. And then risk factors, you always have to figure out what are the, you know, the single points of failure or what have you. I know you talked to Bob Dickinson about what happens if you guys run over by a bus and you were trying to find an elegant way of saying that, but I like the run over by the bus theory, because there's a lot of them run through the parking lots. So yeah, it is a risk being a one man shop, I have a lot of the institutional knowledge now, I document everything. We have an MSP we work for for low level tasks, like help desk, things like that. But they're not the decision makers, they're not able to like really transform and guide and come up and lead big projects. So yeah, so that is certainly a risk, you know, whatever. Cyber attack is always a risk, we've had two communities get hit in the last couple of months pretty hard. We've had a couple of small incidents here, but fortunately we're pretty on top of that sort of stuff and I will say this. I've never worked in an organization, I won't offend any of my coworkers, where the technological sophistication is where it's at. But I tell you what, you tell them, this is what it looks like, if you have a question, just call and they will do it, and they've been fantastic about it. And I think we've avoided a lot of situations that other communities would would have, just by the people here being very responsive to coaching and and. Kind of like asking the question if they're just in doubt, so. And then, you know, digital transformation, if you know, it's hard, and you know, I've shown the seven products I'm managing. I know we'd like to get a lot of other things going, like, you know, a new finance system would be a great thing, what involves me a lot, not from a GL. Decision-making standpoint, just the technology, how do we support it, back it up, make it, you know, performant and available, that kind of thing. So hopefully, as more of these big ticket foundational products get off my plate, I can start to help other other departments with where they want to go, where they want to be. That type of thing, and I think. We need, I need to be more proactive in like, in course, working with Nina's a big proponent of this and she's been great about it, is. How do we step back and think about, somebody wants to do something in a department, how do we make that work for every department? Because probably they do similar things, and we have to get out of the methodology of being siloed and everyone doesn't want off. And so we try to want to try to raise that up in the future and get better at that. So future project, you asked about that, one of the things I'd love to do, and and this goes back to when I was a resident of Menford, is I don't feel like I should ever have to get off the couch to pay a bill or interact with the city from a paperwork. You permitting, you know, pay a ticket, get a dog license, I should be able to stay at home and do it all. And the and the reason, biggest reasons for that is accessibility, right, we have a lot of elderly people, we have people with disabilities. They should be able to interact with the city the way any of us can, that can walk into this building and go to offices and go upstairs and what have you. But what really brings a lot of other things is easy reporting, like. I know Matt's a data guy, if he wants to ask like, you know, how many permits, you know, do we fulfill last year for this certain thing? At what dollar value and over what timeframe by each quarter? We really can't answer that question easily, would have to go to a lot of paper, a lot of spreadsheets and try to aggregate it. If we were all electronic in this way, push a button, there you go. You know, revenue generation, we probably miss a lot of revenue just by things falling through the cracks, not following up on things like fines or whatever. They get, you know, on pieces of paper and it's stuck behind something else, so you have a better picture on how much money you're bringing in and you collect more money. It's been proven in numerous communities that, once you go electronic, you you raise revenue essentially from the the fees, fines and whatever. And then just forecasting to saying, you know, where were we at this year? If we raise a certain permits cost, what will that give us next year? You know, it's again, very difficult if you don't know where you're starting from. And barriers or hurdles to getting there are certainly costs, you know, we're we're going through next this year, probably next year, a little bit of a fiscal challenge. You know, that's difficult, you guys, because you got to have money to start it. What is the overall vision across the entire city of what we want to accomplish, does it include schools, does it include public safety? We have to think about that, how much, how big of a bite do you want to take at once? And then certain products, who owns them, you know, somebody at the end of the day, like Bob needs to be able to own, you know, the financial system coming in. But does he have the time for that, so you need to bring in consultants, how does that work? You know, you have to think about these things there, so. That, I believe, concludes my presentation, so any questions, what have you, I'm available.
Thank you, you've been watching, you've been learning, you've been iterating, and I didn't have to ask my questions, so I appreciate it. Council Leving.
Thank you, thank you. How much, how much would it cost? And do you think it would be feasible to get one of those phishing simulation? Like a program, so in my last, in my last job, we would periodically get phishing emails that were actually sent out by IT.
Call penetration tests, a lot of places do them. They, the problem with them is is that they desensitize users to them. So they think an email that is actually a legit phishing attempt is the test and they either ignore it or they say click on it to be funny or what have you. They don't have the best results, there's, back in the day, what they were, they were based on your infrastructure, what they were trying to do, and then because everything moved to social engineering. They try to do things like that, again, they they're so simplistic that. It'd be like the mayor, I get a text from the mayor saying, can you go to Best Buy, buy me five, you know, gift cards, because I'm in a meeting and I want to reward the people I'm in the meeting with. It's like, well, I know that's not legit, you know, it's pretty easy to get around that. There 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 just isn't a lot of utility from my point of view on those tests.
I I get a lot of, I get a lot of emails from Zach asking me if I have time for a for a quick task.
Yeah, but those are legit emails he sent.
But but no, so I mean, so the ones.
We do do testing, we did testing a couple of years ago, we did training, I believe in training, because the training runs you through the scenarios that you will see. Okay, versus a one-off getting an email that looks like these seventeen other phishing emails you got, I prefer training. And when you train users up, they become, that becomes moot at that point, because they know what's a phishing expedition.
Well, well, the ones in my previous employer, the way it worked was if people actually did click on them or they they didn't report them, then it would sort of mark those users being like less. Able to work out that it was a phishing email, what you're supposed to do is just report.
And then it becomes punitive and you send them back for more training and I just, I don't like the feel of that.
Okay, okay, well. Thank you. Awesome. Two questions for you, I'm. Let's see that there's a shift from data processing to communication applications, I'm guessing that's just a better.
Nomenclature.
Yeah, great. I guess it's three, three questions. The goal completion timelines on the projects that you brought up, are there are many of them in the upcoming fiscal year or are many of them out a few years?
Some span, well, next fiscal year after this, so yeah, I guess if I'm still working on them and fiscal year twenty seven, I'd probably. Fail as an IT director or something really bad has happened to us budgetarily. But yes, the the goal is happening on this, on next coming fiscal year, sorry.
Yeah, fiscal twenty six, great, last thing, on the permitting project. I know that, you know, the clerk's office, the planning office, sounds like now Board of Health. Are working with the building department on the citizen service system, I'm guess, are you involved, I'm guessing you're involved in that?
I'm not currently, and that that's why I think it's, you know, one of those things that. Not one size fits all, I know there's limitations to citizen service as far as other departments go. It'd be great to have everything under one umbrella, for sure, I know Citizen Serve has a pretty high cost to it.
Okay.
So now, and and that's not unsustainable, what other communities have done is they say, they figure out how many licenses they'll need. Because you have every department, every user has to have a license, and they will then. Reevaluate the cost of their permits and bake that cost into the cost of the permits, so it's self-funded essentially.
Yeah.
Which I think is a great way of doing it.
Great, yeah, I think that's something, you know, we we need to circle back around as well as a council, we had a request out for. Departments around their fee schedules and permits.
I think it's a good, good time to to really look at that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, well, that's all I had, do you have anything else from members of the council? Seeing none, you are always allowed to email me and remind me. Seeing none, you are always allowed to email me and remind me that I offered you to go first. Um. All right. We will go now to executive. Or actually elections is technically alphabetically first, so we'll do elections if that's all right.
Whatever the council would like. Thank you very much, President Bear's.
All right.
Um, happy to be here before you all and happy to present these budgets. Um, as far as elections is concerned, I don't think we've had an opportunity to update the council. We are happy to report that there is an elections manager coming on uh this month. So to be continued and more information coming your way soon. Um, which is, uh, you know, obviously mission critical. We have a municipal election. Um, we need somebody to run that election. So, uh, that said, um. Like the law department budget, we, we're not going to uh put a department head in a position where they're coming on and then. Immediately expected to present a budget that they might not have even formulated. So I'm here and um. I can tell you, I can tell the council that the former elections manager, Danielle Petrononio. Who, as you know, took a position with another community uh that was a, a good opportunity for her and her family. Had put this budget together and it was reviewed by uh myself and the mayor and um. Effectively, you know, the, the parts and pieces that were put in here were the parts and pieces that were presented by uh Ms. Petrononio. Uh, with one minor element that pertained to seasonal salaries. Um, frankly, I believe that we need to manage and monitor those hours. And if there is a justification for additional hours and there's a need, you know, we can present that to the council at a later, later time, but um. I believe that we can. We should be able to manage that work within the same amount of resources that we manage this past years. Perhaps I would argue, and I'm probably not the expert to argue this, right, but um. More complicated elections this, this past year versus the ones that we have in this, this year. Um, the major difference in this year's proposed elections budget and uh last year is. Outside of the fixed cost growth, which are, are items that are, have been identified by the former elections managers, items that are just in naturally increasing. There is the added cost of printing ballots, which we are responsible to do since it's a municipal election versus. Getting the ballots delivered to the city from the state. So with that, I, I don't really have any other further comments. I am, I will note, I am checking some of the wages. Because something's looks a little off, but um. In terms of being a little low, but what I'm seeing in front of me is that it's correct. I just need to dive a little bit deeper. Because I'm not seeing, for instance, a two percent on one of the positions. I believe the elections manager. Uh, increase is correct. It's just a matter of previously budgeted versus, you know, hired um and experience. In, in that realm as well as the. The part-time position I believe is correct. Again, it's a matter of budgeted last year versus actual this year, which is, I think those two are correct. I'm just looking at the other position at head clerk just to make sure that's accurate. If there's an error in there, we, we'd make a minor adjustment before the final budget is submitted.
Great. Um, that's great. Then we can go to law next and then we can circle back to executive. Um, you know my three questions and you basically answered them for elections, but for law, you know, I would say. We do have a bit more, or does anyone have questions on elections? Sorry, guys. No, not, not in the budget. Okay, well, this is still. You can still ask. Yes, you can.
I think he's contemplating whether I'm the right person. It would be my guess, but.
No, well, are we, are we going to, uh, we're gonna, when the new elections uh person uh is. Brought, the new elections manager is brought on, they're going to come and for city council, we can talk to them, right?
Oh, I mean, absolutely. I think the council has made a um. A regular, you know, request uh to, to meet new department heads and, and, you know, we, we would work to get that scheduled in and, and. We like to give the department head some time to get their feet on the ground, but beyond that, I'm, we'll happily work together on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll save my questions for then. Thank you.
Okay. Um, great. We can move on to the law department. Um, so. We do have here some changes. Not a huge change, actually a reduction of five thousand dollars. And yeah, if you do have any highlights or you want to talk about the great work that Janice Spencer's been doing, um. I know, you know, but I do think we're going to have some questions here. This, there's a solicitor who's been hired and that's the first permanent solicitor in several years. It's a pretty significant change for the office and I would guess for the operations of. How the law department and legal integrates with the city, but um, other than that, I'll turn it over to you and then we can go to questions.
Um, thank you, President Bear's. Excellent um question and excellent. Opportunity to highlight how much Janice Spencer has done over the past. I think it's maybe over two years, like you said, at this point, holding together um the work that goes on in that office. It's, you know, it may seem like there's. Perhaps not a lot going on, but there's a tremendous amount of public records requests that Janice has single-handedly, you know, managed. Um, obviously legal has helped through KP Law in terms of the legal element of those responses, but Janice has. Undoubtedly taken the, the lion's share of that workload and done an excellent job and very, very professional job executing that work. I know it's been uh challenging. I know it hasn't been without a, a, a drain. Um, but she, she has handled it excellently and I, I think. The city is definitely in deep gratitude to her and her work and her patience and her professionalism because it's, it's evident day in and day out. In fact, our current city solicitor has made it known to me that, you know, he, he sees that um in Janice. And her professionalism is, is shines above and beyond and, and she, she really is. Just excellent um at her work. And so we're excited that. There will be a partnership between Janice and the new city solicitor, Kevin Foley. Um. We're also very excited that we'll be able to integrate a different operational approach to how we do business. And what we'll be able to do with an inside council, which we probably, you know, haven't had the opportunity to do. I've said before this body and I'll say again. Perhaps this is my editorial comment, but um, I, I would characterize it and I, I. Feel incredibly strongly about this. We hired when we had a qualified and appropriate city solicitor, so. I, candidate. Um, so I am excited. I am, I am looking forward to um. This council, the city, these departments to see what we can, you know, collectively do. It's going to take some time because we have to adjust how we're doing business. Um. In this budget that's presented before the council is. Uh, basically a level funded budget for these retainer that the city can, the city pays KP Law. Um, KP Law was proposing to increase their retainer, but with some various conversations with KP Law. Uh, including our new city solicitor, even before he started work, um. We, we came to an understanding with KP Law that, you know, it wouldn't be appropriate um to increase the retainer at this stage. It would be only appropriate to uh manage within the existing retainer footprint. I understand costs go up and. You know, hourly wages do go up and, and rates and everything is increasing, but um. We, we were able to work with KP Law to manage that retainer as a uh level amount effectively. Uh, and, you know, we'll, we'll be evaluating that throughout the year. So at this point, you know, the, the budget is level funded and, you know, the only minor differences are, you know, actual budgeted and actual. Actual costs for FY twenty six.
Counselor Lozaro.
Thank you so much. Um, has the new solicitor, city solicitor started? Um, yeah.
Yes.
So I worked for the superintendent when we had the former city solicitor. And he would, I remember he would periodically come to school committee meetings, so um, or frequently. Um, so I am curious about how. Because I wasn't, you know, I was taking the minutes, but I wasn't an active, you know, uh, elected at the time. Um, what will be, first of all, when can we, um, just in the same vein as meeting other department heads? Uh, when can we start uh introducing ourselves or um? Should we shift our behaviors or will it be a little bit more of a fluid? Um, sorry, this is a lot of questions all at once. Um, uh, uh. An easier sort of process of us uh reaching out and um. Uh, getting legal opinions on things that we're working on or things that we're curious about or um. Any of that stuff, I'm very excited about the prospect. It's really a great, um, a great thing for the whole city, I think, so. Uh, glad to be moving forward in this direction, just excited to hear more about it.
Thank you, President Bear's through you. Uh, yes, um, so. Kevin Foley began yesterday. Yesterday was his first day and um. And um, you know, I've, I have had a number of different conversations and meetings with him. It's going to take some time to, you know, his, his wheels were turning before he began work. In terms of the type of work that he could potentially take on. I think uh the days, I know that the city had outside legal counsel. When the city had, you know, uh, former city solicitors onboard. And so, but I think from what I could tell, and I wasn't here at the time. Members of the council who were here at the time and, and members, maybe former members of the council and obviously the mayor. Uh, would probably have a better understanding, but my general understanding is. There's just so much more going on now. So I think those days of having. You know, one city solicitor or two city solicitors and limited outside council is really a past. Matter. Um, I don't, I did send our um. City solicitor some information and preparation for, for, you know, his first week, so to speak. On, you know, how many different things we have going on. And I mean, I'm not really the person. To say this, this really will be something that Kevin will be able to. Digest and analyze and be able to speak to once he has his feet on the ground, you know, a couple of months down the road perhaps. Um, but I just don't believe it's really humanly possible for that workload to fall on one person's shoulders. So getting back to your question, um, Counselor Lozaro, I think it's a matter of allowing. Uh, Solicitor Foley to analyze the work, get caught up to speed on what the work is and then. You know, dive in. We have asked department heads to continue their communications with whichever council they're working with. And. We want to integrate a somewhat seamless operation of a transition. But it's going to require Solicitor Foley having an opportunity to really get his arms around what's in front of him because. Um, as an example, on just the retainer uh in nature of the work that is done by KP Law. Uh, is, you know, things along the lines of general labor services, general legal services. Um, procurement matters, gun appeal, gun, gun hearings and a, and a, I think it effectively appeals, but I'm not. I don't really get involved in those. Um. Community Development Board questions, ZBA questions. That is just the retainer, some of the categories in the retainer. Uh, there's real estate as well in the retainer. There's um. I feel like there's one or two categories I'm missing in the retainer, public records requests, but there, there's a lot of work that happens in. Just, just basically the retainer, never mind um scenarios where we have litigation before boards or. Uh, whether it's the CD board or the zoning board, those are all separate matters in and of themselves. Um, we are a self-insured largely community, which I understand is reasonably standard for. Communities the size of Medford and larger. Um, so we do have claims that have to get managed and, and, you know, processed. And those are also handled. So each and every one of these becomes kind of a separate matter and depending upon the. The work that's before the um law department, you know, it just really needs to be managed and prioritized and triaged and, and. You know, I think, I think it comes to a matter of what Solicitor Foley feels, you know, he can manage. Um, where he has, you know, I think, you know, if, if it, when the council meets with Solicitor Foley. I'm sure he will describe his history and his experience and one of the areas that he likes to, I, I, I won't toot his. I won't, I won't, I won't try to um. You know, steal his thunder, so to speak, but he likes to say he's a expert in unemployment. So naturally, we're going to want to and he's going to want to. Uh, dive into unemployment issues uh for the city, you know, claims that is, and, and work to, to uh assist the city with those areas. Um, so that's a highway, hi- high level response to saying, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time before we have a real answer for that. Um, really, I, you know, I wouldn't even say he's had the opportunity to scratch the surface at this point. Um, but as far as the council members introducing themselves, I, I don't think there's any harm in saying hello, so.
Great, thank you for the answer. Um, and I think, you know, it would be. Be who us to in a couple of weeks, two weeks, maybe sit down. I just want to talk through if we're going to change any protocols, if there's things that are going, requests that are going through me to you, to KP right now that are going to go through him. And I understand he needs time to sit down. Um, and then also agreed on the workload and. You know, we have so much going on legislatively, um, and I know there's all the work that goes on beyond that, um, and we're in a. Strange legal world right now. Um. So, but I think it would be, you know, good to talk about what, what it looks like to have council at meetings and is it, you know. Just if there's going to be changes to protocol, ideally to, you know, I would hope you would think. Save you some time, save the mayor some time, um, now that we have in-house, uh, an in-house director for the law department. Um, do we have any other questions before I ask any of my own, Counselor Sang?
I know that years ago, um, this council fought pretty hard to um, gonna get an assistant city solicitor added to the budget. Um. I think it's very understandable that, you know, the priority was to hire a city solicitor and, um, and then s- see where we go from there on. Um, I think last year when that was taken out of the budget, um, our council made it kind of. Clear that we would like to see that position still be a priority in some way. Um, and I think at the time it was suggested that maybe we would see it in this budget. Um, and I was wondering if you had any updates for, with regards to that.
Thank you, President. Uh, thank you, Counselor. Saying, I was going to say through you, President Bear, but anyway, I'll just. I think there, there's a number of different things that flow through my mind, uh, Counselor Sang with that question. I, you know, I, I. Recall the history in the same way you recall the history and I. I think some of the factors that. We can't entirely foresee is cost escalations and demands and draws on the budget. Um, I think the council knows that, you know, we've experienced a number of challenging financial years and. You know, one way to look at the challenges we've had in the past is to say. Our past challenges have been greater than our current challenge and that is huge. Um, it's really. Something I'm proud of. I think that this entire city should be proud of. It's part of the teamwork that the mayor and this council have, has established. In, in managing that issue and not letting it get out of hand because there were so many unforeseen without getting into. You know, all the challenges and how the, the, this, the budget structural deficits presented themselves in the past. Although, you know, if any council member would like me to cover that, I'm happy to. I just. Uh, out of respect to your time and, and your knowledge of the, the history, I won't, I won't dive into that now. Um, but we. But realistically, we still are in a challenging financial situation. And candidly, at some point in this budget season. I had messaged the mayor and said, I just was hoping that there, there was going to be one that wasn't going to be this challenging. We know FY twenty seven is going to be. Challenging. We know we're, we're taking, we need to take on some debt to do a major and important project. But I was just, I was, I was kind of falsely hoping that there was going to be one and, and candidly, I was disappointed that, that, you know, we were. You know, in a situation where we're still dealing, dealing with a deficit. So while I do my best to look at things in a positive way and. and I am happy to say, you know, at one point, we were offsetting the city's budget with thirteen some odd million dollars in ARPA funds. I know you'd recall that, Counselor Sane. We are not anywhere in that world because we worked hard collectively to, to, to manage that. But we still have some management work to do. And it all does come down to, we can't fund everything we want to fund. We're working hard to try to integrate department requests, council priorities in a very tight situation that we're in presently. And we've, we've said in past, at least last year, I think last year might have been the first year, we didn't offset the operating budget with one-time funds effectively. If my memory serves me correctly, we said we're not going back there. Because that's not how we should be doing business, and that's not going to get us where we need to be. So that's a long way of saying, I, I don't know that we have the flexibility, but it's really not something that's frankly my call. But I know the requests that have been made that are in front of us are the ones we're analyzing, we're looking at, we're trying to include wherever possible. And we're not going to be able to include them all. So that would be added on top of those, and I just don't know how it's possible, unfortunately.
I'm grateful for your explanation. I think this is a conversation that we'll continue to have over next few weeks, months, years to come. I, I'm glad you referenced the history too, and I think I'm glad we, we remember it the same way. And I, no, I think just to put out to folks who are maybe watching this meeting, who, you know, don't know that history a little bit. I just, I think a lot of what the council was thinking back then, when we fought so hard for it, was just the idea that first, if we can bring more positions in-house in general, we would spend less money going forward with contracts, outside contracts. And then a second kind of priority of making sure that we have as few conflicts of interest, especially when the city council needs legal help as well. So those are just, you know, two of the things going through my mind for why this is an important thing for the city council. But I also understand the needs of the budget and the kind of, the other things that we could slash, should be spending on. But I think this is a, you know, something for this council to discuss and figure out. And also, you know, for us to have continuing discourse and dialogue with your office about this.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think I do have one specific question, but just before we go there, I think we, we are sharing the same principle here, and you said it, I mean, slightly different words than I would say it, but, you know, we don't, we aren't able to fund everything we want or need to fund. We don't have the revenue to fulfill the expenses, just fixed cost growth expenses that we have now. Never mind the things that we aren't doing that we know we need to do. And, you know, the override has helped, especially, I think, on the school side with that. But even then, right, we, it's a seven, seven million dollar override. And certainly help DPW, we have a little bit more. Like, that's one relatively significant new investment that we were able to make on the city side. Five hundred thousand being significant in this context, but maybe not in the greater context of what we need. But even then, the seven million for the schools, 1.75 million of that was just not cuts happening last year that we covered with ARPA funds, right? So it's 5.25 million, and it's done a lot. But it's, it's, the costs are just escalating so much faster than the revenues. And especially these major drivers with health insurance, the trash contract. And now we're seeing, you know, that was a reality anyway. It was a reality that was getting better before November or January, depending on the date that you want to pick. And now it's a reality that's getting worse. And so it's a frust, really, you know, frustrating situation. And when, when I did, I like to try to see the budget in inflation-adjusted terms because I think that's really the best way to understand what are we doing now versus what are we doing before? And after the recession in 2008, the real value of the city budget went down. It was worth, like, we were, had a budget that was 10 to 12% less in inflation-adjusted terms than it was in 2006 and 2014 or 2015. Slowly under Mayor Burke, that started going up. And also, you know, there was this kind of COVID shock, but we actually started doing better a little bit. And then there was this huge supply shock from inflation. And by fiscal '23, we were back down, you know, we had gotten up to like 5% above fiscal 2006 value by like fiscal 2021, back down to zero immediately in '23. And with the overrides, we only are back on trend. We're at 9%, we're like, the budget can do 9% more now than it did in, in fiscal 2006, which averages out to like 0.45% per year. So it's really, and that's with new growth. I mean, that's, you know, so it's a hugely, we're in a really difficult fiscal environment. And we all have priorities. Assistant City Solicitor is a party, Assistant City Solicitor just dedicated to the council to help us work through the, you know, significant legislation that we have been working on for several years now, would be of huge value. But we also heard from Rich Lane that he could have a department of six more people, and Paul Ringan that he could have a department for four more people. And that's just the people we heard from tonight, you know, we heard that. Mary Ann, you know, we heard it from Mary Ann as well, right? Like, they have four or five people, maybe even more than that, who could be at risk from state and federal and private grant issues. So we have, you know, again, we're in this position where we have dozens and dozens of positions. And if we brought Robert Cameron in here, she'd say, well, the Somerville Planning Department is 80 people, and ours is, I think, 12 now, maybe, or maybe even less, less than that. So we, we have, and those are just the needs on the operating budget. We haven't touched as much that we need to build a new high school, and we need to keep our buildings in place. So this is a really difficult fiscal situation. And I'm never going to not say it when it arises, and it is important for us to talk about. I do have one question, which is, I did notice in our difficult fiscal situation that the solicitor salary dropped a little bit. And I was just wondering if that was just because it was kind of a hypothetical salary versus a real salary?
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay.
And I, President Baer, if I may, I, I think, I think the context is important. And I think this council makes it a point to inform the residents and those who are hopefully watching these meetings to have that context. I also know that this council often has to address statements that are perhaps misleading, whether intentional or unintentional. And I appreciate the work that goes into that because it's, it's important. I, there's so much history here, right? And there's so much that goes into how, why we're where we are. And you touched on a, a large part of that, probably beyond my knowledge, in terms of going back to the, the real monetary value of the dollar or the budget, going back to, as you, as you cited, you know, 2008. And I think that it's also important, and then, and perhaps I was remiss in saying, you know, we were in the deficits, and I know the council knows this, but just for context for the public, we were in deficits because of the challenges that the pandemic presented. I don't really love going back to those days because I don't think really anyone wants to hear it. And this is really for the public again. But there was so much uncertainty, and every city and town was building in such reduction in estimated revenues. This city did no different. And as a result, you know, there was, it, it turned out that the amount of revenue we collected was greater than what we expected to collect. But these things are natural. It is our fiduciary responsibility to conservatively budget. One of the things I know that comes up often, and I think the main point of my last comment is to say, I often hear that there's discussion that occurs at this council by members of the public in terms of, you know, free cash and what free cash is. And, you know, the, the talking point that I hear often is that free cash is overtaxed dollars. But the reality of the situation is the city cannot estimate revenues above what it will get in revenues because it will have a structural deficit. Again, I know this council knows this, but for, for anyone in the public who's, who's following these meetings and who's listening and who hears potentially these comments about how, you know, free cash is overtaxed dollars, first and foremost, a lot of our free cash was a result of the ARPA that was generated. And you've said that, President Baer, in past meetings. Seems that no matter how many times it's stated, it sometimes falls on deaf ears. But I think, following, you know, the, the leadership of, of the comments made by Counselor Sane and you, President Baer, I, I, I feel it needs to be restated by others as well. And I, I think it's important to be restated by me to the degree that, that helps the public understand that we can't estimate revenues at the amount that they will come in. First of all, we don't have a crystal ball. Secondly, we can't be in a situation where we don't collect enough revenue to manage the budget that we. So we will always, we should always have a surplus. We're not doing our jobs if we don't have a surplus. One step beyond that, and I swear this will be my last comment, is the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services at the state level recommends that we have a share of money that comes in. Again, remember, again, for the, for the public, we're building off of a foundation where ARPA injected a lot of money into our free cash effectively, you know, indirectly. And that's built up over several years. And then on top of that, where the amount that's going into what is getting certified as free cash, those amounts are reasonable. I'll stop there, and thank you for your indulgence.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chief of Staff. And I think, you know, it's this difficult situation where we ask people, there is a lot of history, there is a lot of context, and we ask people to hold two truths simultaneously. And sometimes that can be hard. But, right, if we, if ARPA never happened, then we'd basically be, we would have, we were lucky that the revenue came in higher than it did because if ARPA never happened, then we wouldn't have accrued these balances. And these balances, while not insignificant, pay for one major capital project if we use it all on that, right? So it's not that, you know, we, 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 it's not that this money is meaningless, it's actually great. Like, if ARPA didn't happen, we would be in an even worse situation. Because it happened, I did a spreadsheet where it's basically a 95%. Like, if you look at the free cash balance and then the ARPA revenue replacement, it's basically 95% of the free cash balance came out of the ARPA revenue replacement, right? And that's great, that means that we have these funds to do these investments. If it hadn't happened, we'd have basically no free cash, and we'd have tight budgets. And your point is well-taken, and, you know, the more that I've spent time doing this, you know, understanding, we had no idea what was going to happen, so we underestimated revenue pretty significantly. And, you know, the public, the residents, the businesses did better than we thought, right? Like, meals and rooms did better, and excise tax did better. And some of the, the things that put together local receipts did better than we expected. And that's really good. Things were not as bad as we budgeted for. And between that and ARPA, we have a little bit of money to make some forward-looking investments on some really urgent issues. But it's not that we have, you know, an ongoing persistent forever, you know, windfall, right? It's not that we're going to get that every year, so. It's really interesting, and especially, right, as we now see the tides turn the other direction with finances and with the way that the federal government is acting, we're kind of going to be on the other end of that, where we're maybe going to get, you know, hopefully, there's not a billion and a half dollar Medicaid cut that is then cutting public health or Chapter 90 or whatever, or UGA, or Chapter 70, you know, these things that are essential, local aid that comes from those environments. So we benefited from the fact that we were in an environment where the federal government said we need to invest in our communities. And without that, we would have been at a zero basis, and now we're in kind of an opposite position. And so those winds of federal policy are, are very strong. I'll go to Counselor Lemming and then Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Lemming?
Thank you. First, just, just one question and then a bit more comment. But beside, besides the money that we receive from the federal government, how much, just on average, free cash have we generated as a result of unspent money from the yearly operating budget year to year?
President Baer is through you. I, I don't know that I have a number for that because I think it's a little, it's a little intertwined would be the, probably the best way I would be able to describe it. For instance, if I've understood your question correctly.
Well, well, what I mean by the question, and I, I don't, like, it, it's just a percentage. So the state recommends that it's between 3 to 5% every year. So I was just, I just wanted to know if, I, I didn't want to like get into like a long discussion about it. But if you had it off the top of your head, like, I just want to know if there's sort of like an average number that the city has been putting into free cash as a result of unspent money from the operating budget every year?
I don't have those numbers, and they're intertwined with the ARPA amounts because what we didn't spend in a budget over here because we had COVID funds, you know, has directly or indirectly affected that number. I don't, I don't have that analysis.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine. I was just, I was just curious if you, if you did. But, you know, not everybody would necessarily have that off the top of your head. But to comment on a few points, so, yes, taking two truths at one time is, is something that we, we ask people to do. I think saying that there's a million-dollar deficit in a year when we successfully passed an override is understandable because we have been experiencing a very difficult economy. And the fact is that if the override had not passed, we would be in a far worse situation than otherwise. People continue to conflate the free, free cash with operating budgets. The fact of the matter is that it is bad practice to use free cash to pay for salaries. That's not something the state recommends doing. That affects our ability to get, that, that affects our bond ratings. It affects our ability to get loans in the future. It's just not good practice. And I think people will continue to bring that up, that up in the future. Twenty-six million dollars in free cash for, or 28 million is not a, it is a fairly normal amount of money to have in the reserves for a city with an operating budget of 218 million dollars. So that's, that's not unusual. And in the history of Medford, where we used to operate with no free cash at all, it is, it is a lot. But we should never have been in a position where we were operating with almost no free cash at all. So I think that a lot of residents are seeing this. They're like, why don't we spend that money when they're, when what they're thinking about is a history of poor financial practice that they took for granted? So I think what's going to happen with that is it's going to keep, it's going to keep coming up. I think there's a combination of people who genuinely misunderstand the differences between free cash and operating budget, and people who will keep bringing, bringing it up in, when they actually do understand that, but they just kind of want to use it for political purposes. So that's just a reality that we're looking at. What I'll say my personal frustrations are with it, though, is that I do see that we're expending a very significant amount of free cash on things that we do need. The HVAC systems we need, I am absolutely fine putting up $5 million for, for air conditioning for our school systems in addition to the $25 million loan. But there's also other studies that I really want to see happen that would cost a much smaller amount of money, like the NEXA study for, to update our linkage fees or a new study to update the entirety of the capital improvements program, which would cost under $200,000. I would like to see a transportation demand management study, which would really help development in the city. And those, as I, those as I see them are very significant investments. But we're not spending it on those, even though the returns on those studies would be humongous. And I did put those in as asks to the administration. And I do understand that the mayor attempted to pay for that with the sale of McCormick Avenue, but this, this council voted it down. We disagreed on selling off public land for that. But even so, with, you know, for me personally seeing the $28 million that we have, and then we're not willing to spend it on what is a relatively small amount for studies that would pay hugely in the future, is something that I'm, I'm a little bit frustrated with. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Do you have a response to a specific concern?
Other than to say, President Baer's, that I that generally speaking, I, with, without necessarily commenting on the elements of the city councils requested, um, budget, FY twenty-six budget requests, because we're still working through, I can say that I generally agree with the statements you've made, Counselor Lemming. Uh, I, I think the one thing that is probably the most succinct way to articulate the difference between one-time funds and operating funds is to say that if I, let's say I was eligible for overtime, which fortunately I'm not, so I'm not paid overtime. Um, if I were, let's say any one of us were working.
I think Counselor Lemming was referring to one-time fund requests.
Okay.
We split our fiscal twenty-six requests. It's uh, mostly operating, but there were several requests for the use of one-time funds. Um, and I think that's what Counselor Lemming was referring to.
Okay.
So it was one-time funds for like a couple of specific one-time only projects.
I see.
Um, yeah, just so we don't go down a road.
I mean, I will, I will take those back. Uh, you know, I, that, that is a matter that's still under review.
I think that's a part of the process. Say this just as one counselor that um, in a year when operating expenses are not something that we can, we're not looking at significant changes and increases. Maybe some of these smaller um, things that could go, I agree with Counselor Living a long way, might be a way to um, move some things forward, just to
Okay.
Two cents. I'm gonna go to Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you, Counselor. President, I appreciate you, um. I, I think first, let me start off by saying, because I've, I've listened to my colleagues and the Chief of Staff speak this evening and and I've heard the comment being used that um, of uh, one person's view toward another person's view is, is political. And I think that's, I think that's wrong to, to, to look at what we do as elected officials who are political. Um, and opening uh, different sides of different issues. When we look at what um, I just heard, let's look at what the truths are. Uh, the truths are that we've had professionals, it's, it's, it's as close as the um, the State Assessors Association that came out and spoke and eloquently discussed the process of free cash and what would be needed. And we talked about why it's so important in Medford and bond rating. And we've also understood that a city of Medford size with our budget, uh, number of seven to eleven million dollars would not hurt our bond rating. And the number that we're seeing year after year of twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-eight million dollars in free cash is a problem. To say that we're in fiscal times and that this is crisis, we are. It's crisis of mismanagement. Where other communities, neighboring communities are thriving. We used, we used it again, the pandemic. We have communities that are thriving off of the proper use of ARPA money. And you want to talk about using uh, money correctly, this is the reason why we're in this situation. You see neighbor communities now, they're in same situations because they used ARPA money in the wrong format. So when you look at the disingenuine discussions of the use of ARPA money, the use of um, um, a, a, a free cash and understanding the, the issues that we've had here historically. Historically, we haven't had shovel in the ground for new growth and development in a scale that brings in revenue that would su- would, would support and assist our taxpayers in almost six years now. I believe there are two projects going on now that we would hope that would stop bringing in some real revenue. Whether it's the Fells Way side or the Mystic Valley Parkway site. But these are projects that should have been put forth years ago. No different than what we're doing right now with the zoning and looking at the Metford Square corridor and looking what we're doing there. Because that, that's the vision that changes what we will be looking at for financial distress. And as you move forward and we look at our future, there's undertones that the seven point five million dollars, although huge and although very, very painful to a lot of uh, at-risk Metford residents, that that simply isn't enough. Well, I, I, I've heard from different department heads about asked to be cut, that we need a million dollars being cut through the city's budget and we're in dire straits again. When we, when we pay, when we, uh, when we, year after year, find ourselves with millions and millions of dollars in free cash that are, are the comments that you made, Madam Chief of Staff, is just total, total disingenuine. When twenty-eight million dollars isn't a bad number, of course it is. Of course it is. State professionals, assessors have already stated that nine to seven to eleven million dollars is what we're looking at in the city of Metford size. When y'all looking at twenty-eight million dollars in free cash, that means we've done something wrong when it comes to managing our finances in this community. So although it's a different view of my colleagues, if you want to spin it to make it sound as if it's political, do, go at it. Go at it. But there is a, there's a group of citizens in this community that are really hurting for some serious changes that have happened in this last fiscal year that they're probably leaving the city or doing some drastic, drastic cuts in their own personal lives and their personal health because of the moves that we've been making. And I just, I'm just a little Larry and little, a little nervous that this council is starting to plan maybe another future override for the fact that what we're hearing, oh, in two thousand and twenty-seven, things are gonna get worse. It's easy to say, sit around a table and say, yep, we're all right. This is great. Let's all pat ourselves on the back. But it's disingenuine to say that twenty-eight million dollars again in free cash isn't a factor of mismanagement. Y'all wrong. We've already had professionals express that over and over again, but some people just don't want to listen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Lemming.
I mean, I don't, I don't think the argument that we have too much free cash is something I would disagree with. Um, the argument that I disagree with, which was what was continuously brought up during the override was that we should take staff salaries out of free cash and not have an override. I mean, that, that was, I mean, that, that's a change in narrative. Like, I think that everybody here would like to see the amount of free cash that we have spent on capital projects as it should be spent on. But the arguments that were being made during this override were again that if we did not have one and we just put all our free cash towards teacher salaries, then we would be completely tapped out in a few years. So that, I mean, that, that is the first time that I've heard the, uh, that I've heard my colleagues say that um, whereas before, whereas before he was saying that, um, you know, we should be just paying for our staff shortfalls from the override. Now, now it's like, okay, no, we have too much free cash. We should have less because we need to spend it on things. That, yeah, I agree with that, like that, that's, it's, 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 it's a different argument entirely from what was being brought up before. So, so yeah, like, I'm um, I do think that we need to spend uh, the free cash that we have on uh, on capital projects. I, we can still have a one million dollar deficit because again, this is the difference between money that is used for capital expenses and money that is used for ongoing operating expenses. Um, so yeah, I mean, I mean, I was, I was, uh, just, uh, just, just wanted to make that point. I mean, and in terms of, in terms of a future override, like si- in, in the, the intent of Prop two and a half was to have periodic overrides. Um, Medford waited forty years before we even had one override, which was far too long for a city of our size. Now, could the next override happen in another forty years? Maybe, but the point is that in a, in a city's entire existence, I mean, with, with the way that this is designed, you can't just have um, a single override and then expect it to, and then expect that to be okay. If you look at the state data banks uh, with other municipalities that have had, uh, it shows like the history of override of these other municipalities in the past. Yes, they have continued, like, like different municipalities have continuously had overrides. Um, normally, like sometimes every ten years, sometimes every five years, sometimes they'll do one in like the year two thousand and then they'll do one day twenty-one. It just varies depending on the state of the economy and the needs of the budget, so. Yeah, like try, trying to act like it's a boogeyman thing to say, oh, we might need another override in the future. That's, that's just like, okay, yeah, we might. I hope it's not in, in the next ten to fifteen years, but you know, it could happen, just depend, it, it will likely need to happen at some time in the more distant future, so. So yeah, those are, uh, that's, uh, that's the points that, that I wanted to make. I mean, I don't disagree with my colleague that we need less free, that we should have less free cash than we have. That's a frustration of mine, but that's not what, that's not the argument that was being made previously.
Point of clarification, Mr. President.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate my, my fellow colleagues for the words, but I, 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 obviously he wasn't listening to me during the override discussions, because what my, my battle with the override was that over and over again, and it's public, public comment, and I could share it with him again with the videos, but again, it was stated over and over again. It's not the fact that this council didn't think we needed an override, but through the process and how we got to the override, how it was pushed through, how it was rushed and how we weren't prepared, in my view. So what I said at the time was, looking at the shortfall with the school department, that one-time funding to correct those issues, but by, because by the way, some of the money that's in the O, in, in free cash are salaries that were not used year after year for positions that were left open. So to use that, those funds to fix the school's budget concerns and issues without dividing the community, that's what I said over and over again. And then we could sit together with time and look at the process to see if we truly needed an override, and if we did, to prepare our community, especially our most um, needy community, community members that needed the assistance to prepare themselves for this, that, that, that's the process that I was looking for. I never said to use free cash over and over again. That never came out of my mouth. So again, it's easy to spin the dialogue to make it sound what's, what's good on the other side, but it's very simply put, what we needed for the city, in my view, opposite from my colleagues, and I understand that that's the, that's the political process, that's a democratic process. But my battle wasn't about not needing an override and not understanding if we need an override. The battle was, or the understanding was to slow the process down and one, use one-time funds of the twenty-four, twenty-six million dollars we had at the time to support the school department and then prepare our community if that was the need. But here we are again, twenty-eight million dollars in free cash. And one of our leaders of City Hall has just told us that's, that's okay, that, that's not a big deal to have twenty-eight million dollars in free cash. That's absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is that still Counselor Lemming? I'd like to avoid just you know, recognize you, but Counselor Lemming.
I, 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 I would get in a back and forth, but, about this, but I, I don't really think it's worth it at this point. We we had plenty of these conversations um, during the override, so I don't, I really don't feel like rehashing this at this point. I mean, everybody remembers what was said, so. Yeah, that's that.
Yeah.
I'll send the video, I'll send the video, Mr. President, just to remind my fellow counsel that once.
No, that's, yep, okay, thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. I'm not, if we're talking about me, uh, it's not that twenty-eight million's not nothing, but again, we have an HVAC project that's worth thirty million. So when I said it was not insignificant, I, I mean, it is something, but again, it addresses like one capital project if we spend it all on that. Um, and I just wanted to bring this up, and again, this is just from the ACFIR and the budgets, and it's not from Bob, but um, fiscal, the, some of the big free cash changes, um, fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-three, there was a nine point eight million dollar increase. Then an eight point seven million dollar increase. But in those years, we used eight point six million dollars in ARPA and seven point six million dollars in ARPA, so the actual free cash we would have gone if ARPA didn't exist would just have been one point two billion in fiscal twenty-two and one point one million in fiscal twenty-three. So when we talk about the city's, you know, underspending, you know, that, that revenues came in above expectations and spending were below expectations, um, that only, without ARPA, that only would have meant about a million dollar increase in free cash. Um, so it is, I think we're having a debate about the source of free cash. I think we all agree that it should be used for the purposes of the city in a quick way. It sounds like we have differences on how it should be used or how it maybe should have been used last year. Um, but without ARPA, we'd be looking at one million dollar increases, which is, you know, point two-five percent of the general fund budget. Um, it's really not a huge surplus. Go to the Chief of Staff.
Thank you, President Baer's. I, I I just, I'm gonna be very selective with my comments because I think um, President Baer is through you to Counselor Scarpelli. I think we have a I think we can fundamentally say we may disagree on how the landscape has shaped itself in the past several years. Um, I, I think everyone on this council is here. Uh, everyone on this council is trying to do everything that they believe, everything in their power um, to move the city forward. Um, that said, I understand that there are competing factors and I'm just going to clarify one thing so that there's no ambiguity on the matter. I don't want anyone to walk away from this conversation thinking that the comment that I made about fiscal twenty-seven being a difficult year was a tee-up for an override. I want to be clear, I was not coming here to say that. Um, that was stated here this evening, and I just want to restate that we are making that known because it's a fact and we plan to work to build that in. So I just want to be very clear about that, and I don't want there to be any misconceptions that that was planting a seed for an override for the future as it pertained to the challenges of FY twenty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you. If anything else on the Law Department budget, which is where we started.
Thank you, President Baer's. I do not, unless the council members have further questions.
Seeing none, we can go to the executive. I'll just quickly read it off. We have the executive, which is the office of the mayor. And we have fiscal twenty-five budget, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and seventy. Fiscal twenty-six proposed, six hundred and ninety-three, thirty-three, eighty-eight. It's an increase of seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. It looks like we do have a reduction in the personnel with the special projects coordinator position has gone away. It's, seeing nods there. Um, the fixed cost growth driving that seventeen thousand was personnel lines partially shifting the communication specialist position to the city as well as uh, cost of living and step increases. We do have um, increase in the C click fixed contract, uh, increase in MMA membership dues and a general inflation cost for uh, costs pertaining to events. And with that, I will turn it over to the Chief of Staff. Uh, feel free to talk about the change, any of your highlights in the office or plans for the year, and I know it's a little tougher because the mayor's office, so it's you know, let's not talk about the whole city, let's keep it, keep the scope narrow. Um, and then if there's things that is specifically within the executive, um, there may be, you know, needs or desires that currently can't be funded, you know, we'd happy to hear about that, although we do think this department has a unique level of control over those types of things.
Thank you, President Baer's. I, I, um, generally speaking, you know, as, as you've characterized, the the service level is largely not changing within the office. There's no additional um, new employee proposed positions, the service level in terms of number of FTEs is largely the same. Um, the difference here is we have, as you mentioned, the special projects coordinator position going away. Um, an intern, um, a proposed internship funding, um, filling some of the void that's left from that, effectively from that role. Um, the changes in moving previously funded positions outside of the budget into, more into the budget, uh, as they you know, effectively impact the budget and that, those are largely the changes, but uh, we do continue to have some grant funding integrated into the salaries and wages of these, uh, some of the staff members here, in particular, the communication specialist is being funded and, and largely working on. communication specialist is being funded and and largely working on health matters and under the BAR Foundation Grant. So really not too much going on there. There are fixed cost increases pertaining to C Click Fix. The cities basically report reporting software so that residents can report issues with, you know, potholes and you know, that that continues to be a challenging challenging work that is, you know, completing the potholes, but I'm not trying to go down any further slippery slopes here today. I think I've met my quota there. I I really don't have any other further comments. I think it's pretty straightforward. I will reserve comments on the work of the department for the mayor and any further submissions that she would like to make because it's really truly under her leadership that that the department is able to do the work that it does and frankly, under the leadership of the many departments and boards and committees that this organization has that do all the the tremendous work that's that's done year in and year out. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any questions about the executive? Seeing none, I do. Just three quick questions. There's a reduction in the stipends. I was just wondering what happened there.
Yes. So I I'm not entirely clear on the history as to why, but historically, the stipend for part, I believe it was part of the stipend for the the mayor as the Chair of the School Committee was in this budget. For whatever reasons, it's now no longer in this budget and it's in the school department budget. So that's the shift. That's the reduction because it's just moved to a different place.
Interesting. Yeah, if there's any more history on that, that would be good to know. But
I'm not sure, frankly, I'm not sure why it's in the city side budget or was in the city side budget. But it's it's no longer in the city side budget, so.
On the Arts Council, I'm just seeing a zero actuals for Fiscal 25. And I'm kind of just wondering about general activity of the Arts Council. Has there been difficulties in finding appointees? Or why the spending is down, especially at this time, I think it's more important than ever with federal cuts to arts and humanities funding. You know, that's some essential funds.
Thank you. What I can speak to on this one, because I don't have specific information on membership and the like, I it's my understanding that this is more of a trend, an accounting matter. There's a accounting entry that's made, and I remember I recall seeing an email communication from our former finance Assistant Finance Director and Budget Manager, who, as the council knows, is still working part-time for the city in a budget management position through this budget cycle that flagged that we hadn't made that accounting entry. So it's really more of an accounting entry, but the backend, I don't have further information on at this point.
Okay, if we could put in, if anyone would move to just request an update on the Arts Council, totally hear you that it's an accounting question, but you know, I've also gotten some questions from folks in the community. How can I be more engaged with the Arts Council? And I also know some former members of the Arts Council have had to step away due to just, you know, not having the time and to be able to put into the volunteer role. So just wondering if any of that is is at all connected and if there's some way that maybe the council could be supportive or get the message out. We need some folks for the Arts Council. And I could be completely wrong too, right? It's just kind of trying to put together some stuff I've been hearing. Is there someone who would make that motion? Counselor saying. Yeah, just an update on the Arts Council, yeah. Last thing, and if we need to save this for HR, I totally understand, but do an update on the classification and compensation study.
Yeah, I think that's a good question for the Human Resources Director when she's here. At a at a high level, I know it's being worked on, and I know that the HR administrator that was hired to fill the special projects administrator position, which was ARPA-funded, has been working diligently on that project.
Okay.
Trying to get that wrapped up.
Bring it back up. We don't have to put in the report, but if you want to give them a heads up, I'm going to ask the question.
Sure.
Great. All right. Do we have any other questions on the executive budget? Seeing none, do we have any comments from the public? But this is the second one on the second motion. I think Counselor Lemon is second. Oh, okay. Great. Could you could you reread the motions?
Counselor Lemming moved to request from Chief Buckley and the Medford Police how much time officers are spending responding to animal control issues outside of City Hall hours, and that's the one that needs a second.
Seconded by Counselor Lozaro. All right. There's no further questions, no comments from the public. Is there a motion to refer the questions to the administration, keep the paper in committee and adjourn? On the motion of Counselor saying to refer the questions, keep the paper in committee and adjourn seconded by Counselor Lozaro. All those in favor? Oh, one second. Oh, it's, yep, sorry, Counselor Scarpelli is still here. Okay, on the, is there a motion to join? Can we add motion to join to the last motion? All right. Yeah. So we're voting on everything. We're reporting them to the administration. We're keeping the paper in committee and we're adjourning. Right, Mr. Cook, please call the roll.
Counselor Callahan and Vice President Collins are absent. Counselor Lozaro. Counselor Lemming, Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Singh, President Bears.
Yes. Five in the affirmative, two absent. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.